Hey. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the excess board of Oklahoma County. Today is Wednesday, July. Wednesday, July thirtieth. It is nine o'clock. We have a full house, Mr. Brett Towns.
Present.
Mr. Teresa Sellers, present, and I'm Eleanor Thompson. Notice that this meeting was properly posted on July twenty second, twenty twenty five, court's office. Is here. First item on the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding the minutes of July seventh, twenty twenty five.
If there's no changes, I move adoption, or I move approval of item one.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second item. Discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five, twenty eight, forty two. Enter fund transfer from general fund, a thousand and one. Cash to employee benefits fund, forty ten. Cash and appropriations in the amount not to exceed a million dollars. This is to transfer general fund cash and appropriate it to employee benefits in order to pay claims for the county for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six. This has been approved by the budget board and the excess board in the Oklahoma County annual adopted budget in June, twenty twenty five. This item is requested by the finance department, office of the county clerk.
Okay. Any issues?
I have no issues.
Uh, move approval of item number two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Third item on the agenda. Um, discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine sixteen. This is another enter fund transfer from general fund, a thousand and one. Cash to employee benefits, already ten. And appropriations in the amount not to exceed three million, five hundred thousand dollars. This is to transfer general fund cash and appropriate it to employee benefits in order to pay claims for the county fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six as approved by the budget board and the excess board in the Oklahoma County annual adopted budget in June, twenty twenty five. This item is requested by the county finance department, office of the county clerk.
Uh, you'd like to move approval of item number three?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item four. Discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine nineteen. A fund transfer from the employee benefits supplement, nine nine one, to the employee benefits fund, forty ten dash one one oh. In the amount not to exceed three hundred thirty four thousand, thirty dollars. Contingent upon the check being deposited, approved by the budget board on Thursday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty five. This is to transfer CJA premiums from twenty twenty five.
Present.
For July twenty twenty five. Item is requested by John Wilkinson, benefits and retirement director.
Uh, move approval of item number four.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Item five, discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine, twenty seven. The temporary appropriate appropriations for Edmund School District number twelve for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six. As follows, general fund, two hundred and seventy eight million, three hundred and twenty two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen. Their building fund of thirty million, six hundred eighty one thousand, seven hundred and forty seven. Their child nutrition fund, thirteen million, seven hundred ninety nine thousand, four hundred eighty nine dollars. This item is requested by the county finance department, office of the county clerk. So they're late.
My question is why do they say why they're late? Because this is supposed to be in the support, you can approve. This gives them the authority to expand in this fiscal year, and they don't have that authority yet, by my thinking.
Yeah, I'm not sure as to why they turned it in.
Do we know, do you guys timestamp them when they come in? Because I know they had a board meeting June second. I know they've got a new superintendent. That was the last board meeting of the old superintendent. They've got a new finance director. And their board clerk superintendent secretary, they've split those jobs, so someone dropped the ball somewhere in their organization.
Yeah, as far as timestamp, uh, I have to go back and check and see when they e-mail it to us.
Okay.
But we've had, maybe, so if you'd had it, you'd have brought it to us, correct?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
You might want to ask them.
Okay, I, I think I would, because I know they've already had payroll in July.
But their spending with no authorization has to be. We gotta brace that. Okay. Otherwise, we're heading to prove, right?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, discussion of possible action, this is item six. Regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine fifty six. Cash fund appropriations for the city of Hera. Street and alley fund in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, seven hundred, two dollars and two cents. This item is requested by the county finance department, office of the county clerk. Did we already do, we already did it?
No, no, sorry, that was twenty.
No.
So they're piecemealing some of that stuff?
We get this a couple of times a year.
Yeah.
From them. Uh, move approval of item six.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven. Discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty, thirty six. To receive for filing, city of Hera budget fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six in the amount of nine million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy six dollars. And the Hera Public Works Authority budget for, I don't know, is that correct? Fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four?
No, that's incorrect.
Okay, should that be?
That should be thirty, uh, twenty five, twenty six.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna amend that. Let me do this again, I'm gonna amend it. Discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty, thirty six. To receive for filing the city budget of Hera for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six in the amount of nine million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy six dollars. And the Hera Public Works Authority budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six in the amount of six million, three hundred and ninety nine thousand. And they're late too then, right? Right?
Um, I'm scrolling through the budget. Think, so, uh. I don't remember, because I know they, like Brett said, I know they, like their appropriations kind of do it in this timeframe, but yeah, they might do that.
Okay, so next, okay, next time we have a, a, um, a next board meeting, I want you to tell us when Hera says there's any, when Edmund School centers, okay?
I move to approve item number seven, uh, to, uh, receive for filing these documents, as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Last item, item eight, discussion of possible action regarding fiscal year twenty twenty five. Assess valuation from county assessor's office. Presented by Blake Ellis, comprover for Larry Stein. County assessor, requested by Larry Stein County Assessor, getting ready to receive.
Here's the document he's bought off the press. Just that down. This is the, um, assessor's report to the excess board that has to be turned in every year once we receive public service information. And we compile that with everything that we certified in June. We have to compile this report and turn it in to the auditor's office, this report. Once we receive public service, we have ten days to complete the report. That's why I really appreciate you all leaving the meetings from Monday to today. Because the report wouldn't have been, today's the tenth day. And I finished at ten thirty last night and printed it out this morning, so I really, Monday, I couldn't have had it done. Um, so it just basically goes through everything, all evaluations. The first three pages separates it out by schools, the first, or I guess it's technically the second page after the code. The, um, the school district separates them out, and the bottom portion removes the TIF and all the different TIF increments. And then you've got the VOTECs and the cities. And then there's a, there's also a sheet in there for an overlap district where O triple C overlaps with some other VOTECs in some areas, and then the fire district. And then all the rest of the pages after that are the detailed breakout sheets for each school uh, VOTEC and city that they, we added that about three years ago. Where it breaks down each entity has, and how total valuation for real estate, personal property and all that, there's TIFs, so you get a number at the bottom of that. So that's everything I have, unless there's questions.
So I'm, I'm just asking, what was the valuation increase percentage wise in the county this year?
It was overall five point five one percent. And that's, yeah, overall as a whole, we had real estate, this is a big chunk of that. It's usually, I'd say anywhere between five to seven percent on a yearly average. This year that was six point three five percent. And then personal property was about two point three percent. And then the difference in if more exemptions are filed, homesteads additional, DAVs, we see quite a large amount of those every year. Usually about six hundred new applications. So that, uh, fluctuates, takes down a little bit of increase, but yes, we, between all those exemptions, overall number of public service was down a little bit. But overall, five point five one percent.
About payment of lapse taxes, are they, uh, are they seeing that, uh, lapse in taxes increase?
I would have to give it the treasurer's office to ask, because since they pay down there, I don't get, I'm not show up on any of your documents. No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't show up on any of ours, no.
I have a question on the first page.
Yeah.
And second page.
Yes.
What is the, the, the item in red for homestead exemptions? Is, is that the tornado stuff?
No, the red just shows a, it's a decree, or it's not a, not a positive number, negative in those categories.
Okay, so if I look at.
And those are in, all the bottom ones are TIF districts? So on the TIF, just are you familiar with it, okay?
Yeah.
So from the base value, that the reds would be the difference from, from the base value. Most of, some of those are in their infancy. Like on, uh, the one that's negative is a hole in the net column. That one is that one, yeah, it's a new TIF infancy, but it also is separated out and to some other pieces, so the TIF as a whole is not a negative.
Okay.
But that one piece that includes Oklahoma City Public Schools is negative, because it's also, uh, I believe Crecheau is in that one as well, yes, the one, the line right below Crecheau. So see, it's got quite a bit of increase, so the TIF as a whole on that one is not negative. But that one category for Oklahoma City Public Schools is negative on the TIF portion.
And that would be the same on, on the.
Same on all those, yeah, second and the third page, on the VOTEC page, yeah.
Okay.
And that's why there's not any, on the VOTEC page, the second one, and in that, the last column, you don't see any red. Because the way it's separated out, I believe there was only one, I believe it's Rose State on that TIF, was the only VOTEC college portion, since the TIF as a whole was a possibility, that's why you don't see red in the net column there.
Okay, when, 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 when I meet with the tax row, when we take things off, does that get reflected in this report?
It will not be reflected in this report, and for that, any tax rule correction that's, you would meet with and approve and be for previous years. All of these, it'd be for twenty four, twenty, any.
Okay.
There will be no tax rule corrections for twenty twenty five till after, after we certify the tax rule. So all these values, yes, some of these could come off once that occurs later in the year. But yeah, anything as of now would be twenty twenty four or before on the tax rule, which are taken out.
And where does this get filed?
This gets filed with the, um, auditors, there's a page that I'll have that will require all three of your signatures on it as well. And then, once it's done and all that, I will email a copy to the state auditor's office. And that's where the auditor's office will take it, and they publish on their website. You can go on their website, and all seventy seven counties will, once they're turned in, will be published on the website. And they, used to, we would get letters or calls, emails from different companies that deal with the schools and the bonding and all that, and ask us to send them these reports.
Yes.
And a few, I think it was two or three years ago, the auditor's office asked that we just send them all to them, that way they can publish them in one location. So if some of those companies deal with multiple counties, they can just one location and print off all the different ones they need, and it's right there, so they're not having to send letters or contact all the different offices, they can just go on and get it that way. But yes, it will be, once it's all signed, I will email it over to, uh, the auditor's office that they can get it up on their website.
Okay, so when are we gonna sign next time?
No, I've got a sheet right now for you to sign, whenever we're done.
So we just, basically, we're approving the evaluations.
Correct.
For Oklahoma County.
Correct. Yeah, now that we have all the public service, all the valuations to get.
Okay. Okay, we'll sign.
All right, I'd like to move approval of item number eight, fiscal year twenty twenty five, assess valuation for Oklahoma County.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
And then it's the three lines of, it's blue, okay?
Yes.
Oh. You stressed out yesterday?
I was stressed yesterday, I'm not gonna lie, because we had some hiccups to where the reports weren't matching to what I showed should be after going through all, because we get a PDF and a print, it was a hundred and two pages this year of each company you have to go through, and we put it in there and added everything, and the reports were off a little bit, and so we were, I was a little, Jeb was helping me on this, I was a little, you can ask him.
He came back from vacation.
I was a little stressed yesterday, but the, once we got the reports working, then I could give out any of the, I was probably ten thirty by the time I got last night, and printed it all out this morning, and we're done though. We're done, that's the good part.
Thank you.
Thank you all for, thank, like I said, thank, I appreciate you all moving the meeting.
Sure. I could have said no.
Yeah. But, no, if you would have, then I would have contacted the auditor's office and said, is it okay if we don't have three signatures till later, and go ahead and turn it in?
Okay.
Appreciate it.
So you have anything further for us?
No, man, my apologies, too, get with it next time.
Do we have any private comments or non-true people? Okay, I'll entertain a bunch of people.
With your.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, this is the Board of Equalization Special Meeting. Today is Wednesday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty five. It is nine twenty. We have a full house, Mr. Brett Towns.
Present.
Mr. Teresa Sellers.
Present.
And I'm Eleanor Thompson. We have four items on the agenda. Discussion of possible action regarding the minutes of July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move to approve minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Towns.
Aye.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Okay, second item, discussion of possible action regarding the date and time of the twenty twenty six regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Equalization, requested by the clerks of the Board Office of Oklahoma County, per twenty five, oh, it's three eleven. So we're gonna start meeting next year. And we will come in the first Monday, is it the third Monday of January, to open up.
Open up.
And then, um, unless there's some special, uh, item that comes in, we'll start meeting April first, we can meet the fourth. And then we'll just meet, they should give us items as they come in from the assessor's office. Do, I don't need a motion, do I?
Um, just to accept the schedule.
Okay, we'll accept the schedule as, as mandated by the state statute and the constitution, which is, we'll meet third Monday in January of twenty twenty six, and thereafter as, uh, requested by the assessor's office.
I move to approve item number two.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Mr. Towns?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Item three, discussion of possible action regarding any comments from board members, assessors, officer, staff, requested by the clerks of the Board, Office of Marissa Tree, Oklahoma County. Guys have any comments? No?
I think on, on behalf of the assessor's office, we appreciate you all on this year.
Aw, thank you. We appreciate you guys, too. Um.
The new, the new algorithm wasn't that much.
No.
On our end, I know it must have been on your end, but it was different.
And so we're gonna miss two of you guys. One quit and one's retiring.
Yep.
The one will be here next year.
Jason has, doing other things, and Stork is retiring.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll see our faces along the way.
Oh.
Have they named a successor for Stork yet?
No, Alex Natsal College.
Okay, um, and the last item, discussion of possible action regarding the closing of the Board of Equalization twenty twenty five hearing session, requested by the clerks of the Boards, Office of Marissa Tree County Court. Okay, so sixty eight OS, Oklahoma statutes, section twenty eight, sixty three says that we will start meeting April the first through May the thirty first of each year, and we did that this year. If there are special circumstances where you guys have gotten things in and the time has run, it's time to have a hearing, we are authorized to meet before April the first, and sometimes we do. Uh, then the county budget board has to extend us after May the thirty first, which they did this year. At which point we can meet until July the thirty first. And this meeting is to formally close us out. We have been informed by you guys that we did all of the residential appeals. We did all of the commercial appeals. We didn't have very many, uh, personal properties, but we've done all of those, all the time has run. So we're officially closing out our meetings prior to the thirty first, which is just tomorrow. And, uh, we'll, we look forward to starting up again, um, uh, next year, good Lord, Will and the Creek don't rise. I got one more year left on my term, until next year. And, uh, we wanna thank the clerks. Yes, we, we had a we had a nervous Nellie on us this year, and she just came through with flying colors and finally calmed down. And we really didn't, just didn't have any hiccups. So we thank you for that, and thank you for that. And, uh, we thank the assessor's office, you guys are really good guys, you have good demeanor. Uh, you have good information. And I must, I personally thank Mike, because I had a habit of asking him. asking him things on decision day and he wouldn't give me this little like, no, you can't ask. But he was kind, so you guys are good.
You know, just, uh, you all are very professional, answer all our questions and I, I'm just appreciative of the way you, uh, work with the taxpayers, uh, prior to this meeting and then prior to, uh, hearing and during hearings, so thank you all again for your professionalism.
Yeah, I agree with, with both of them. Um, I really appreciate your professionalism and, and the detailed information that you all provide working with us and helping us better understand the detail that you're providing to us, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if you guys need us to put in a word with Larry when we, performance evaluations, tell him it's me.
That, that's always appreciated.
Okay, all right, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
I move that we close this two thousand twenty five session of the Board of Equalization of Oklahoma County.
Oh, second.
How do you vote, Mr. Towns?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right.